Good afternoon. This is a commission work session for the city of Largo for Tuesday, October 13th, 2020. I'd like to call this meeting to order and apologize for being just a minute late. I was sprinting from a previous meeting that ran a little bit late. So we are going to start as we do our work sessions with a business spotlight, and it's nice to be back here in person. Chris?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Honorable Commissioners. It is great to be back. It's wonderful to see everyone's faces again. I am so very pleased this afternoon to welcome our business spotlight. The company is Amermed, and they're located in the Gulf Coast Business Center at 2310 Tall Pines Drive, Suite 230 off Ulmerton Road. The company is a manufacturer of personal protective equipment. The company owners started the manufacturing business when they felt compelled to help in response to the coronavirus crisis and the shortage of personal protective equipment. Their goal was to provide high-quality masks with the highest filtration ratios made in the United States. Owners Mrs. Eva Kubiac and Mr. Waldemar Kubiac opened the company after much research with machine manufacturers, fabric manufacturers, suppliers, the FDA, labs, and finally finding a location. So I'm going to go ahead and let Mrs. Kubiac tell us about her product and their level of certification and the company's capacity. So I'm going to go ahead and segue to the four questions that we ask our business spotlight guests. Can you please tell us about your business, Ms. Kubiac?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. The business is completely a new adventure for us. We've never been in that type of business. Many different things, but nothing medical products related. But this was very spontaneous and fast decision for us once the whole pandemic started. We come from Poland, me and my husband, and we were watching the situation all over the world, and it was, we figured out much earlier than, you know, rest of the people here in the U.S. how serious this was. I think for a period of time, this was a little, you know, downplayed, and, but it was really, really bad there. And we knew there was a shortage of masks and all the PPE products. But then we thought, this is probably not going to be a case here in the U.S. But then it did become a problem because, you know, we all heard the stories about, like, that only some people should wear the mask, that it's not really necessary, that it doesn't, you know, prevent the illnesses, and I was very skeptical because my mom is a nurse. And when the whole Europe got infected, you know, Spain, Italy, there's people dying, and it's like, you know, the lockdown is starting, and America is still, you know, kind of, you know, loose, I would say, and relaxed. I called my mom, and I said, "So what is it? Is it really that we should wear the masks only if we are sick so we don't, you know, get other people sick?" And she got me on the phone with her friend, who is a retired nurse that worked for 40 years in, as a head nurse of infectious diseases ward in a big hospital there. And she said, "No, you need to wear your masks. It's not so you don't get other people sick. It's for your protection, so you don't get sick." She said, "This is how I survived, working 40 years on that highly, you know, infectious ward, because I was wearing my mask and gloves and goggles and shields and stuff." So she said, "No, you're going to wear that mask whenever you go out." So we knew this was going to be serious, and eventually, there's going to be shortage because China can obviously keep up with all the demand. They were locked down for months before we were, and, you know, once you start the research and you figure out that there's over 80% of all PPE products manufactured in China, not only the products, but the fabrics, the supplies needed for manufacturing of these products is manufactured in China. So I was really overwhelmed. I was, you know, how is that even possible? How did we allow for this to happen? You know, how can we be so dependable on a country that's like so far away? What if they said, "We're not going to sell you any masks"? But they did. They raised the prices, you know? So, so, too long. I'm sorry. Once I get to the microphone, I'm like, you know, sorry about that.
It happens.
Anyway, so we've made a decision. Okay, my husband is like, "Let's help out. We run tour boats in Clearwater Beach, so we're obviously going to be closed down, you know, or it's not going to be as busy, so we're going to have all this time on our hands. So let's help out." This was the first time in our lives where we felt altruistic, and maybe let's do something because we have time. We don't have to worry about our stuff. Let's help out. Let's, let's figure this out. And we really thought it was going to be very easy. Let's just get some machines, and, you know, it's like paper, three layers of paper, let's manufacture it. Not a case. It turned out to be really a complicated process, and it took a long time and many sleepless nights, but we, we figured it out. The goal was to make a really high-quality product. Once you get into the subject and you learn and you educate yourself, there's just so many variables, and these masks that we are shipping from China as a country are such low quality, and it's, it's just worthless, really. And most of the stuff that was purchased from China is like paper towels in your kitchen. The filtration ratios and just quality is very, very poor. So our goal, right from the start, was to make it as good as possible. And my search, I'm sorry.
Oh, I would, no, go ahead.
So my goal was to find the best fabrics there were, and I really wanted to use American products, and we had problems with this. They, you know, told us they'll put us on the waitlist because the demand was such a high. I was like begging these manufacturers. So they agreed finally, so we got them. We got, you know, the machine running. The building turned out to be beautiful. When we first started, we live in Clearwater Beach, and so I contacted the mayor of Clearwater, not expecting much. I just emailed him. I said, "I want to open up this, you know, mask production. I think it could help. What do you think?" The next day, I got an email from him. "Yes, definitely will help you out." The following day, their economic development team reached out to me, and they actually founded building in Largo for us. Then Pinellas County got involved. So it was very, it was very nice. We really felt a lot of support from them, and they kept us going, too. And the building is perfect, the one that we got in Largo, because there's, you know, certain condition has to be nice, clean, air-conditioned, and, you know, we have a warehouse area, we have clean area and dirty area. We employ seven people right now, and the ball's rolling. The masks that we manufacture, I've just, literally maybe two or three weeks ago, received our final test results from Nelson Labs. There was a bunch of tests that we had to go through, our masks had to go through, in order to figure out what is our ASTM level of our masks. So it's Level 3. It's the best there is. If we sanitize them, they're good for surgeries. They have the highest liquid, liquid penetration ratio. They're non-combustible. The filtration ratio is over 99%, so it's really the best there is. So now, we come to the point where the general public has easy access to, you know, Chinese masks that really overflow the market. There's, there's plenty of them. If you go to Sam's Club right now, there's like a wall of different manufacturers, all from China, obviously, and they're much cheaper than even, you know, our production cost. But having these products being such a high, you know, quality, our main target right now is doctors and hospitals and, you know, surgery centers and such. So it's been a short time since we really got those final tests so we can be, you know, trustable, because being a new company, it's, it's, you know, extremely difficult to even get in touch with someone, especially these days, you know, when people are not physically at work and... So now, we're at the point where we're really trying to sell. You know, we've had sold some to Pinellas County and some local little, you know, nursery, nursing homes and here and there. I've sold some in Illinois and New York, and they're actually keeping us alive. But to be honest with you, I was hoping, you know, once, when we're starting this, I thought we're going to have like a line of people in front of the building because, well, there's a shortage, right? Not a case. So if you guys can think of any way to help us out, we would appreciate it very much because we really need to get in touch with like legitimate businesses or entities that could use our masks.
Eva, thank you so much for covering, you know, why, where are you located? I have to thank Clearwater for, for helping you find a location here, but we're very fortunate to have you. You talked a little bit about your challenges, you know, especially now getting folks to purchase, you know, your masks and getting in touch with, you know, the various hospitals and the healthcare groups. What are some things that maybe Largo could do for you to help you in your process?
Well, I was hoping if you could get me in touch with the purchasing department of any medical facilities that are located within Largo. I think when I call them or email them, they very often, and this is actually the actual feedback I got from people who I got to talk to, they don't believe we're actually manufacturing here. They think we're just another distributor shipping stuff from China and selling it, saying that's our product. And they just, you know, it's hard to break through amongst, you know, all these dealers and distributors. So I think we could use some like legitimate recommendation, someone that's going to say, "Yes, they're actually here. The factory is here. They're doing it," you know, "and, and I have all the test results, and the masks are really great. I actually bought some for you guys to try it and see what you think." But we're only getting good feedbacks from whoever got them from us. They're good for sensitive skin. There's no dyes, they're all white, very soft fabrics. They won't tear, they won't pile. Like I said, the highest filtration available. So even for regular folks, you know, when you wear those masks, it's, it's really beneficial. It's much better than anything else. We also actually came up with this metal strip that goes in the inside of the masks. These, as regular, the way the Chinese manufacture them, they put little plastic wire, kind of a, similar to the one that you see on bread loaves, you know, the ties, which doesn't really hold shape. So that was one of the things me and my husband came up with, because it didn't hold the shape. And the whole point of the mask is that it, you know, adheres to your face as good as possible, so there's no gap, so, you know, bacteria can't get in, inside. So this actually is the best way. As you can see, I can even hold it here, which way, it holds the shape, so it really is, you know, a precise fit.
What is the best way that folks can order through you? What, how can they get ahold, get ahold of you and, you know, see some of the, learn more about the product that you have?
Probably our website is the best place to start. It's www.amer, A-M-E-R-dash-med, M-E-D, dot com. There's actually all the test results. There's a little interview I've had with ABC Television and just a little description of what we do. Our phone number is 727-953-3703. That's the office number. I'm there every day. If I don't answer, I'll call back.
Eva, thank you so much. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and ask our city commissioners if they have any questions for you at this time.
Any questions? Commissioner Holmes?
You know, BayCare's office is right up on Drew Street.
What office?
BayCare, Ward and Plant Hospital and all the rest of them. That's where they're off, that's the main corporate office.
Yeah. The, the problem I have is I can't just walk in there and say, "Hey, this is, you know, these are my masks." What I've learned, and I didn't know before, is that hospitals don't buy products from manufacturers. There's always a middle person. There's a whole bunch of dealers working. I don't know what's the reason to it. It's not very, you know, logical to me, but I guess that's the way it's been done for years, and that's the way it is. And there's actually like a buyer's group for certain hospitals in Tampa Bay area, and I've tried getting in touch with them. Nobody called me back. Nobody, you know, emailed me back, so, yeah. I, to be honest with you, I've sent out about 400 emails ever since we learned that there's this level of, you know, the Level 3 ASTM, Level 3 of our masks. So I was sure this was going to be good for medical professionals and for people. Got back with me.
This isn't one of yours.
No. Nope, you'll get some. I have a whole box here, so...
Actually, this was procured from the receptionist desk out there.
Okay. That's, that's probably...
By the way, I got a thing from Walmart the other day. The month of October is Small Business Month, and they are looking for vendors. And I, they sent me an email, and you might want to contact Walmart.
I did. Nothing. Zero. I've contacted Walmart, Walmart, Target, Sam's Club, any retail, Home Depot, all of the big retailers. There, I think by the time we were ready to sell, they have already placed their orders, and they're huge quantities. And I know there's a lot of dealers who did the same, and now they're trying to get rid of their, you know, products, reselling even below their cost, probably. But maybe that's a different story. Thank you for letting me know. If, maybe I should go and talk to like local manager or something. But in terms of selling our products at Walmart, no word whatsoever from them.
I wish you well.
Thank you.
I wonder, have you been in touch with State Representative Latvala's office?
I have emailed Congressman Rubio, but I also haven't heard except from, "Thank you for contacting us. Someone's going to get back with you," but...
You may consider Chris Latvala, who's our, one of our state representatives.
Okay.
He has a real warm spot in his heart for Largo businesses.
Okay.
Some connections to that Tall Pines area.
Certainly, I'll do that. Thank you, sir.
He's also located very close to your business.
Maybe I should just stop by.
Yeah, maybe.
Okay.
Commissioner Finger?
Thank you. I was just going to ask if you had contacted any of the local Chamber of Commerce's.
I have not. No.
Might be a, a good resource to reach out to.
Sure, yes. We can try to... Now, I've tried contacting the school district, the public schools, and I actually submitted some bids with the Pinellas County and Hillsborough County Public Schools, but I haven't heard from them yet, so...
We'll certainly work to get the word out. As, as you may know, this is Manufacturing Month as well. I know it's Small Business Month, according to Walmart anyways, but it's also Manufacturing Month, and so, so we like to celebrate our manufacturing here in the city of Largo. And, and that's probably the reason Clearwater sent you down south to Largo, because we, we really take a lot of pride in our manufacturing here as well.
Okay.
So thank you for being here, and we will work, Commissioner Smith has a comment as well, but we'll work hard to get the word out.
Thank you.
First comment, as the son of a former nurse, thank you. I really appreciate what you, what you and your husband and your employees are doing. Second is, if, if our staff, maybe, maybe Carissa, we're with Largo Med and a couple others, maybe we can reach out and say that we've met with you, and then maybe we can put in a word that we've met and talked and stuff like that. And with Chris Latvala, I would have no problem if you can give me, do you have a business card or something like that? Or I can give you my business card, and I would love to get your information to him if you can't reach out to him. I believe I still have his cell, cellphone number, so I would love to put you in contact with him.
That would be great. That would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you again, and I'm my mother...
Yes, my pleasure.
My mother, who got COVID, I, thank you. I really, really thank you.
Yes. I mean, we feel great, you know? Emotionally, it's great, and it's, it's great to make a good product. It's just, I think it's going to take a lot of time for us to actually, you know, get out there.
One of the things that I just wanted to add that we have, that we have found out over the, the past week is that the various states have supplier networks that they've set up and registries for vendors, such as, such as your business. And so we will be working, I know we, we talked a little bit about that, so we will be working together to help get you set up and registered and connected to those registries so that you could be on the, the list for purchasing. So I really appreciate you coming, visiting with us today. I look forward to working with you more, and thank you so much for your presentation. I know you brought, you have brought something for the city.
You can just leave it here.
We'll just leave it here. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and just, this is, thank you so much. This is, she has donated masks to the city, so I wanted to thank you very much.
You're welcome. If you guys like them, let me know. We can donate more.
Thank you so much.
I want to make sure that you like them.
Did you talk to the county health department?
Uh, hmm, I, well, I don't think I did talk to the health department specifically. I, like I said, the county bought some masks from us already. They bought two shipments from us, and so I am in touch with their purchasing department and Mr. Mike Maedel, does the whole economic, you know, development thing. So they know we're there. They know if they need, you know, something, this is what we have.
If the county's getting them and they're happy with it, ask them for a referral.
They actually did give us some, because we, all those bids that we were trying, like I said, I haven't heard from anyone yet. I think the bid from the moment you place it, you know, give the proposal to the actual bid award takes a lot of time, too. But they, yeah, they have been giving us their recommendation or referrals, yeah.
Have you tried, by the way, did you talk to VA?
Who's VA?
Veterans Administration.
No, I have not, no.
I would, they're down in Bay Pines. I talked to them, too.
Okay.
It's potentially more convoluted than the county. Just a warning. But thank you so much for being here, and, and we look forward to much success in your company.
Thank you so much for having me. Have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, we will have a Clearwater Largo Road Finding of Necessity presentation.
In 2014, the city of Largo initiated the process to expand the Clearwater Largo Road Community Redevelopment District. This is the first major step necessary to establish or modify the boundaries of a community redevelopment district. And that first step is to prepare the Finding of Necessity study as required under Chapter 163, Part 2, under Florida statutes. On June 2nd, 2020, the city commission approved a task order for Kim Lee Horn and Associates to update the original Finding of Necessity for an expansion to the existing Clearwater Largo Road District from 2014. And the purpose of this work session item is to present the draft update of the Finding of Necessity and to seek city commission direction to proceed with the formal steps to expand the Clearwater Largo Road Community Redevelopment District. This Finding of Necessity has been updated to provide the current data for the subject areas. And if the city commission desires to proceed with the Finding of Necessity, staff will present the finalized Finding of Necessity at a city commission meeting for adoption. And once this has been accomplished, future phases will include a request for the delegation of authority by the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners in order to expand the existing Clearwater Largo Road Redevelopment District and establish a tax increment financing overlay district for the, for the new district. So I'm going to go ahead and turn to Mr. Kelly Klepper from Kim Lee Horn, and he's going to go over the Finding of Necessity.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. For the record, if everybody can hear me okay at this distance? Is that okay? Okay, perfect. There again, for the record, Kelly Klepper with Kim Lee Horn. With me tonight in the first row is Ms. Andrea Pepandrew. She's actually the workhorse and the brains behind a lot of what you're going to see here. Between us, we were part of the original team that did the 2014-2015 analysis, so, you know, we've been involved with this project since it's, I'll say its inception. And I keep forgetting, I've got Commissioner back here, I apologize. Before I get into the information here, I do want to say that we would not be sitting here if it was not for the efforts, tireless efforts, as a matter of fact, of Carissa, Carol, Isabella, and a countless number of, of staff that the city has. They have bent over backwards. They've been extremely responsive, and, you know, there's, and you'll see that there's quite a bit of information analysis that we've prepared, all of which has come from, a lot of it from the city's own records. So having to get in contact with those folks, so thank you to the city staff in making everything available to us. So what I want to do is take a few minutes tonight, whoo, it's going to be sensitive, to kind of hit the highlights. You know, you've got about 80, 90 pages of a, of a full-blown analysis, and a series of appendices, sub-district analysis, so there's a lot of information in there. I'm not going to go through every bit of it, just especially because it's a workshop, and, you know, if you're like me, you've probably heard enough to where it's like, "Okay, just keep going, Kelly. We're good." But we're going to talk about the conditions that we solve as part of an independent assessment and what our recommendation is or what our findings are as part of this Finding of Necessity study. So why are we here? As Carissa said, you know, we started back in 2014, and in 2015, we, we did a, an update to the area. We started looking at the Clearwater Road Community Redevelopment District area. We started looking at expansion. We went through a series of, of items, but at the end of the day, we, you know, we kind of stopped short at that point. So of course, now here we are, five years later, we're back. Why? Also during that time, the county was going through a process to update their standards, so we kind of got put into a hold without having to do anything. So, you know, what we're doing is trying to work to implement that vision that was started some time ago, which, as you can see on here, is targeted redevelopment, reduce community burden, and also those secondary benefits to the adjacent properties. Why is this important? We're going to go through a, quite a bit of data so that you can see why we focused in on this area. I keep, okay, happy fingers. So unlike your typical community redevelopment district, we actually have two tests that we have to pass in this case. As Carissa said, we're actually Chapter 163, which is the Florida statute, which has 15 conditions. We've kind of highlighted those there. We have to meet or exceed the standards of at least two or more of those. Typically, you start looking in the three, four, five, six components of those statutes. Now, because Pinellas County, of course, is a charter county, they have the ability to say, "Great, but..." So they have the authority at that point to adopt additional standards, which is what they did back in 2016 with the policy implementation guidelines, which, as we all know, are currently under review by the county. They're moving towards finalization of a couple of things. But their current ordinance and the current standards that they're working from basically provide nine conditions or factors that we have to analyze in addition to the state statutes. So what we have to do literally is, is that two-part test to go through and come up with the recommendations. So you may start to think, "Well, what did you all study?" Over 20 different topics or 20 different items that we analyzed, whether it's in the field, the desktop analysis, the GIS, pulling records, pulling data, running whatever it was, and this is the complete list of everything that we looked at as part of this expansion area and the qualifying conditions. Now, are we saying that this, this area meets all 20 of these? No. But what we're saying is we wanted to make sure we had a clear picture of what's going on within that district so that we could confidently say, "We believe that it meets the independent test, which is Chapter 163, as well as the county's own standards." So what is the area? The area that you currently have as part of the existing Clearwater Road CRD is the area in green that encompasses about 307 acres. We were asked and tasked to start looking at an additional 365 acres, which we're effectively calling the expansion area. And we got real creative on that one, didn't we, folks? But what you'll see is there's areas that are outside the city that are within that yellow box. Those are there for reference purposes only, future analysis, and everything that we've done as part of this analysis focuses in on the areas within the blue. So when you start combining what's in the green, that existing plus the proposed, we're talking about a square mile of the city. That's a pretty sizable area to, for which, you know, the city's kind of looking at overall total redevelopment efforts. So what are those qualifying conditions? We're going to go through a couple of slides just to kind of summarize that. And when you see a lot of this data, especially when you see county averages and things of that nature, that's information that has been derived specifically or directly from the county. This isn't something that the city said, "Oh, you..." This isn't something that the city said, oh, use 12% as the county's percentages. Or, you know, Kim Lee Horn didn't go out and say, well, we think it's 12%. The county established those thresholds in their own criteria. So when we start talking about county averages for households below the poverty line, per capita income, that's the information derived directly from the county's own standards. So, you know, just looking at the socioeconomic, you start looking at what is the median age of the housing stock? 59 years. Some places, that's considered historic district. Other places, it's like this, areas that are not meeting community expectations, simply put. So you start kind of going through the items and the analysis. And from a, the number of households, the per capita income, residential values, you can see that, you know, this area is not hitting the standards of those thresholds established by the county. So we're already starting in a deficit at that point. So we kind of keep going on. We start looking at infrastructure. This is by no means a reflection on the lack of effort by the city, to the contrary. We all understand there's limited budgets, there's other things that take priority, and you start trying to make the most out of a limited amount of resources. So we start looking at street layout. Are there areas that have dead-end streets, substandard streets? Are we looking at parking? Is there areas that don't have sufficient landscaping or stormwater?
Let me ask you a question. Can you go back one slide?
Yes, sir. Maybe?
When you got down there, your median residential value that proposed, you know, for the city of Largo limits of $97,642 versus the county average of $178,000, well, that's noticeable, you're showing a mobile home park. But I'm sure that's a coincidence. But if you go to that area there, mobile homes do not appreciate like a residential home. And in that area, you've got quite a few mobile home parks. Matter of fact, one of them was, there's two of them being demolished right now. One of them's already going to be an apartment complex. So I'm asking, this $97,642, that's including, that's the average out, including the mobile homes then?
That is, and I'm going to ask Andrea to confirm, that is information that we pulled directly from the county property appraiser, as well as confirmed with the Florida Department of Revenue. We did utilize the codes that say residential property. So, you know, some areas get coded by the county as commercial. They may have a commercial component with, we'll say, an apartment above. Those items were excluded from that analyses, or from that portion of the analysis. Andrea, do you want to clarify?
If you, if you have a mobile home park that is not owner occupied, where they're merely renting the land, is that considered commercial?
And Andrea's got the entire database with all the parcels?
I don't mean to, I don't want to get into the weeds on this.
No, 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 that's a, that's a great question, Commissioner. I'm going to put Andrea on the spot real quick. Maybe?
Also, is that including unincorporated Pinellas County? Because there's a lot of that over there, too.
This is only for the CRD, which is in the city limits, so that blue area. Yes, sir.
Yes, so that is within the city of Largo limits. And we did pull the data from the property appraiser and the Department of Revenue data as well. And what we looked at was single-family homes for the residential values. Single-family homes, multiple, single-family homes with multiple homes per parcel, condos, multifamily residences, apartments, 10 units or more, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and vacant residential lots under five acres. And mobile homes isn't with that as well. So we did not include, for the residential analysis, we did not include parcels such as the state limit facilities or boarding houses or stores. So we, and within the report, we do list every single item that we included within our analysis and what we did not include. But we want to keep it to the single-family homes, mobile homes, multifamily homes, when we're looking at the assessed residential values. Does that clarify?
Yeah. The reason I brought this up is, Henry, was this four years ago when Pam DeVoe came here and they gave us a report? We asked the, I asked her the question about why is our property tax ratio so low compared to other communities around here? And Pam DeVoe sat, right, she was a property appraiser. And she sat right there and she said, because of the high percentage of mobile homes inside the city of Largo, which, it's basically true because you've got so many where you've got senior citizens in it to begin with and the tax value of that mobile home is below the minimum. So, and that's why I'm looking at these figures here and I, I mean, I understand where they're coming, now I understand where they're coming from, that this is counting the mobile homes. So yeah, that's going to pull the whole average down.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And, and just to kind of echo, I mean, to add on to what you're asking about, you know, when we start looking at CRAs or community redevelopment districts all across the state, because Andrea and I do this a lot of different places, you know, I've lost count of how many areas we've actually gone through and analyzed. You're absolutely correct, the mobile home parks, you know, while they may appear to be good quality or whatever else, they do start to bring the valuations down. And that's just, you know, a general sight.
Well, that's, that's just the nature of the beast, though, because that is a mobile home. It's not built to the standards of a brick and mortar. I mean, that's, that's just a given, but it's affordable living, though.
Yes, sir.
You know, some of them are extremely nice and some are not so nice.
Very much so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And just, just for clarification, if anybody has a question along the way, please ask us. I'd rather you ask like you did, Commissioner, at that point versus wait till the end and we have to try to figure out how to make this thing work and go backwards a bunch.
That's all right. I was born rude.
Okay, so parking, there again, what we were looking at was large driveway widths. We're looking at those parking areas that may have had gravel, they may not have any landscaping in them. And there again, just, you know, things that may have, you know, kind of regressed over the years. There again, not saying anything's going on to the city, that the city's not doing their job, it's just, that's the state of the affair that we have at this point. So we also started looking at public transportation and/or the lack of transportation in this area. You start, when you start looking at some of the socioeconomics, you know, the lack of available public transportation, or in this case, what we call headways, which basically means that that route, you've got at least a 20-minute or an hour between buses at that stop. That's not convenient for a lot of folks. And that doesn't help, especially when you have residences that may not have but one car or zero cars. So they're having to rely on that public transportation. So you start to see those kinds of effects. Connectivity, where we have those projects or those developments that are not connected to where you have to go out onto Clearwater Road to go to the next property, things of that nature. And then also the lack of pedestrian bicycle facilities also was a contributing factor to what we saw. Now, this next item, we want to be very clear about because, you know, what we're talking about, you have six patrol zones within the city. And we're talking about incidences of crime. We know, we kind of look through those to make sure what we're, not getting double-counted or it's not something where somebody was just, you know, jaywalking or something like that. But what we did is to start looking at what we call Zones A and C. Now, this is not the entirety of the Clearwater Road CRD area, but our area is within both A and C here. And you can kind of see citywide versus, you know, these two areas. Almost a third of all of your crime and everything is committed within these two areas. To give you a little bit more of a breakdown, the CRD is about 3% of the city and we are seeing about 7% of the total crime. So you're seeing almost double. So yeah, this is an area where, you know, the police department is doing their best and they're, you know, trying to bring those community policing components into play. Assessed value, this is a major thing that we start looking at. I'm not going to try to go into compounded annual growth rate, the valuations and things of that nature. We went back as far as 2014 and started looking at what were the property valuations to 2019, the latest data that we had. And what you'll see is that the city, the city grew at about 12 and 1/2% over that time period. This area grew about 8 and 1/2%, so it's lagging. So that automatically tells us that the city's continuing to do this, this area's kind of coming along at a slower pace. So that's another thing that we start looking at. What were some of the other topics? Pavement condition, wastewater condition, the incidences of fire and EMS, as well as unemployment, all of which are exceeding the county standards as adopted. So there again, just a couple more things to kind of discuss what we're doing, why, and what were some of those findings at the end of the day. Now, to kind of help facilitate some of these discussions, and we're not going to go into all of the sub-areas, we actually identified or broke the CRD up into different analysis zones. So there again, just looking, the greens, the existing, blues, the proposed. And we did a sub-district or a neighborhood-by-neighborhood analysis, which is in your report. I think it's actually called sub-district analysis as a separate attachment, Andrea. So we went through and did the analysis for each of those sub-districts, so not only looking at the proposed area as a whole, but also the smaller parts, the micro. So we looked at the macro as well as the micro. And, you know, it's pretty telling, once you start driving around, walking around, especially with this report in your hand, you go, yeah, I see what they're saying. What happens a lot of times is folks that live here become oblivious to it. You're paying us to come in and look for the bad things. So that's kind of a double-edged sword sometimes. So what does all of this say at the end of the day? Well, the county says, okay, out of all of these categories, here's the maximum number of points per category and, you know, the maximum that you could get as part of creating a CRD is a potential of 105. Depending on where you fall within a particular threshold or a range, depends on and determines how much money that you could potentially receive through that tax increment finance district that Carissa was talking about. So the goal is to try to be in that 80-point or higher category. Why? Because that's more money coming back from the district. Now, keeping in mind, a TIF is not an extra tax. That is taking a portion of the revenues that are generated on that property and putting it into a special bank account. The city cannot tap into that for general fund, they can't but tap into it to build a new city hall. It has to be spent according to an adopted CRA master plan or CRD master plan, which is a subsequent step to this. So there again, the goal is to try to identify 80 points or higher. During our analysis, what we did is going through all of that. We are confident and comfortable in saying that we believe you've achieved 89 points out of a possible 105, putting you into that top tier of scoring, which would be eligible for the 95%. Now, of course, this is subject to vetting by the county and working closely with them. And I will say that there's a lot of ongoing discussions with county staff, as well as some other folks, to make sure that they understand the hows and the whys and how we got to 89 points and supporting those numbers as well. So where are we in the process? This looks really daunting, but as you can see, we're at the Finding of Necessity. So we'll be back before you in less than a month for a review and adoption by this body. Then this goes to Pinellas County, at which point then they can choose to provide you with a delegation of authority. We move into the plan and at the end of the day, we create that TIF district or that TIF fund. So, you know, this is the first part of all of this. There's still several steps to go, but this is one of the most critical, if not the most critical step in establishing a CRD. So there again, what are the next steps? Kind of like what we just talked about, we'll be back before you in less than a month, talking with Carissa, getting the meeting scheduled with the county so that we can present the same data and analysis to them and hopefully secure approval. And with that, Andrea and I are here to answer any questions you may have on any of the data in this report.
Thank you. Any questions? Well, my other question that kind of pops forward when I look at this, and I think I've asked it before, is, you know, the Clearwater Largo Road, current Clearwater Largo Road District, looks and feels a little bit different than the Missouri corridor. Certainly, both of them probably would check all the boxes. So what's, what's our goal, expanding to the east to incorporate both of those areas in this one, in this one CRD and potentially TIF?
Give me one second. So, you know, one, and I'm going to defer to Carissa as well, but, you know, one of the reasons we started looking at these areas is not only because of the city limits, but the way the growth is kind of going or potential growth for the city, but also what are those areas that are affecting the Clearwater Road corridor specifically? So you start getting into the corridor, plus those secondary and tertiary components of the city that can have either a positive or negative effect. Now, yeah, as far as you're saying, you know, exactly what you're saying, which is Missouri, that could be one of its own. The one thing you want to do is look at an existing or expansion of an existing so that you're aggregating those funds and the projects under one umbrella versus otherwise you start pitting two areas against each other when they really have a common kind of feel and look and approach.
I'd like to add on to that. With this area, the expansion area, as well as the existing district, really, one of the driving factors for the Finding of Necessity study is due to the county's Healthy Communities Initiative that was presented a few years back to the Board of County Commissioners and to this city commission. And really, there's an opportunity there to align some of those goals from the Healthy Communities Initiative, to support the county's initiative and as well as to look at opportunities for incorporating health in all policies and how the built environment and how the future character districts for this area would help support, help support those initiatives. And many of their, those initiatives also align with our own strategic plan goals. So that's really the driving factor for the expansion.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
Have we kept the county in the loop that we're, we're doing this and at the same time, the county commissioners, they know this is coming, this kind of?
Yes, that's a great question. Yes, the city manager's office has sent a letter to their administration. In addition to that, we, administration and myself did meet with Chair Pat Gerard to give her an update about where we're at in this process. And she has also recommended to meet with Commissioner Karen Seal. So we are in the process of scheduling that meeting as well. So that everyone could be on the same page.
And I've always kind of wondered this a little bit, and you said you've worked on CRDs and other, can you have a police department in one?
Absolutely, yeah. One of the things that you can do is community policing. Now, there again, the county, because it's charter, can sit there and say yes or no to those types of programs and policies. But the city of Palmetto actually utilizes a community policing component for their CRA.
Okay. Doesn't Pinellas Park, I believe so?
I believe so. I'd have to go back and double-check.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? Lastly, what, you outlined the procedure, where we are in the, I think there was nine boxes, we're on three. What's the timeline estimated on that before we get all the way back here?
So, yep, the next, the next step in the process is we'll be coming back to you November 17th for the adoption of the resolution. And then after that, there will be at least a six-week turnaround time with the county for their review and to put that on their agenda as well. Depending on, on the county, we may be able to take the Finding of Necessity and the delegation of authority at the same time. And then after that, what we will embark on is that process for the special area plan for the CRA. So that will take at the very minimum at least six months. There will be the public involvement process that will be very important to that. So we're looking at at least 12 to 18-month process from beginning to end.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
Time back, maybe I missed this. With Chair Gerard, what were her positives and some of the questions she wanted a little, did she want more information on anything?
She wants it done quickly.
So do I.
Yes, I think for her, the most important thing was looking at, number one, did we meet the requirements, you know, for the scoring? And what is the timeline for that process? And she was, she was very supportive.
Could we, maybe through the city manager and in the future, keep us in the loop of what Commissioner Seal says when she meets? Because I'm very fascinated by what they, how they think. I'm just, I'm always interested in, so I'd like to be kept in the loop a little bit on what they think. Thank you.
Just along those lines, I spoke at some length with Commissioner Welsh as well about this process and where we are. And we have a lot of, I know he's not there much longer, but we had a lot of support from him as well. Other questions? Well, thank you very much for the update. We look forward to seeing it back.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening, folks.
Thank you. Next up, we're going to have Technical Rescue and Hazardous Materials Team presentation. And I know there were some trucks out front earlier.
I guess Henry's going to be the presenter.
They're bringing the trucks in, maybe.
Sean, go home, John.
Since we're waiting, I did have a question. That report on the needs analysis, did I miss it? Was it not included in the agenda? Was the report...
The whole report was not in the agenda.
Okay. Okay.
If we could get a link to that, I'm sure that we'll get it when it comes back to the commission meeting as well. Thank you.
We put the video together that you requested, and we're just waiting for that to get keyed up right now.
Okay.
We're here at Station 42, located in East Bend, Belcher, to talk about technical rescue. Station 42 is where Largo Fire Rescue has their technical rescue component. We are part of a multi-agency team within Pinellas County, consisting of Clearwater, ourselves, Pinellas Park, and St. Pete. And we have personnel that are trained and on duty every day to respond to incidents throughout the county that involve technical rescue. Some examples of technical rescue would be confined space, high angle, trench, or building collapse. We're here with firefighter George Rodriguez, who is going to take you through some of the equipment that we carry, and explain what they do.
Hi, I'm George Rodriguez, firefighter for Largo Fire Rescue. And as Chief Carroll mentioned, this is our type truck. It is a 2016 International 4400. We received it about four years ago, and it's been a great asset to this county. The trailer is a 1985 Hackman, and that's what holds all our gear. So, we have several specialties, as Chief Carroll mentioned. We have rope rescue, which includes high-angle rescue and low-angle rescue. We have confined space. We have trench rescue, and we have swift water rescue. There's other gear in here that helps us carry out tasks beyond those boundaries, but those are our main functions. So, this is just a demonstration of some of our rope rescue gear. Here, we have a tripod with a blocking tackle system hooked up to a Stokes basket. We would use this as a high point to assist in a rescue of either off a building, or we can actually incorporate this into our confined space rescues, and also rescue people from below grade, setting up a high point button. One scenario we would use this equipment would be to rescue either a person, truck stuck in a below-grade level, say sewer, or a pump facility. We can strap them on this Stokes basket, and we can kind of go advantage. And this here would be our high point. This here is one of our goldbacks used in our rope rescue evolutions. We house all sorts of gear in here that would assist in the rescue of a victim, including an Aztec device, which is used for mechanical advantages, tons of carabiners. We have rope grabs and webbing for anchors and such. We have several of these bags for multiple rescuers. Here, we have some confined space gear. This is one of our air carts, and we use this to be able to breathe in confined space locations where there is potential for hazardous gases and limited amounts of oxygen. Here, we have the gear we would attach to ourselves, our mask, along with our emergency air bottle. This is in case our primary air source somehow becomes compromised or depleted. And here, we have our communication system. So, together with the air and communications, we're able to effectively rescue a victim in a short amount of time. So, a situation you may use this confined space equipment would be rescuing someone from a manhole or a water treatment facility where there are below-grade levels and potential for hazardous gases. Here, we have our trench rescue compartment, where we house our struts. We also carry wood along the top side here, and we use this for shore, to shore up trenches to allow us to go inside and make a safe rescue. A situation you may use this would be a construction site where multiple holes are being dug and crews are working inside of. Sometimes, the dirt can collapse on people, and that's where this equipment is needed to stabilize the hole and go in and effectively do a rescue. Here's our swift water here. We have swift water technicians that are trained to rescue victims that could be trapped in flooded areas with swiftly moving water. People trapped in their cars that go into areas that are flooded. This is all gear that we use to carry out those rescues. Some other things that this unit can do are things like structural stabilization. For example, if a car goes into a building and makes it uninhabitable due to safety, we can set up struts or blocks of wood to stabilize the building. Another situation you may find using this vehicle is for structural collapses due to some natural things like hurricanes, tornadoes. We have the ability to shore up buildings with the wood that we carry on here, or the struts that we carry on here. Thank you for joining us on this presentation today from the tech rescue team at Station 42. And thank you for allowing us to participate in this county team that allows us to do a lot of extra training, and increases our capability and what we're able to provide to the citizens of Largo.
Hi, I'm Kelly Callahan. I'm District 41, Largo Fire Rescue. And I'm also a hazmat 500 with Largo's command staff member for the Hazardous Materials Team, which is a Pinellas County hazmat team. Primary purpose for our hazmat unit in Largo is for research, is this the primary function for this unit. Even if we do know a chemical that we're running on, there's still a lot of research that goes into it. For instance, what kind of suit to put on, what kind of gloves to wear, how it's going to hurt somebody. Is it respiratory? Is it skin contact, things like that? So, that's what this unit does. We've got two computers in here, which we use quite extensively for the research. And we also have some research manuals, that regular old books that we can open up and use if the computers, for some reason, we can't get online, or the other computers are down, power's down, things like that. I'm going to let one of the other firefighters go through some of the equipment that we use, which is for detection, and monitoring, and metering, things like that. And then, we'll also show you one of our Level C suit. It's a level of protection that we use when we don't need a gas tighten suit, the Level A. So, we'll be showing you a Level C suit.
Hey, everyone. I'm Bob Johnson at 38B. We're hazmat technicians. This is Dan Waters. He is in what we would call a Level B hazmat suit, or in this case, it would be respiratory protection to do like decon, or something that we didn't need full Level A. He has the SCBA, so that he can have clean air to breathe when he goes in. And for something like this, before he would get out, he would get fully deconned and cleaned off before he could get out of the station. Like Chief Callahan had said, we are mainly research, but we also carry all of the monitors to be able to detect what everything is. This is our M908. It is a mass spectrometer that we can pick up many different chemicals, explosives, things like different fentanyls. Then, we have our air monitors. We have multiple different ones that check chlorine. And then, this checks, our multi-ray detects multiple different gases. We have our Drager tubes that we can pull different chemicals. Each one has a different number of squeezes to be able to detect the specific chemical that it's looking for. And then, we have our Ludlums that detect radiation. We have different panels that checks for Alpha, Bravo, or Gamma radiation. And then, just down below, we keep our suits. Those would be the Level A suits. We only use those when necessary for protection from any biohazards. And since we're research, we have a board that we go through. We have a couple of computers that we go through with a weather station that we set up, so that we can give accurate facts about each chemical as we learn information from the research team, or from people on scene that can give us information about it, to pass on to the other crews to keep them safe.
So, this is another truck that we have here at Station 38 for the hazmat team. We call it the hazmat utility unit. And it carries all the equipment that we would need for large spills. It's got pumps for offloading fuels, or any other kind of type of liquid. And it's also got absorbents and pads, and these are called, these are overpack drums. So, if there's something that we need to, if something's leaking, if there's a tank leaking, or something like that, we put the whole tank right inside this drum and contain whatever it is that's leaking. So, depending on what kind of, what the call is, depending on what the chemical is, that'll make, we'll either bring the hazmat truck, the communication truck, or we'll take this. If it's going to be, if it's a fuel spill, obviously, we bring this one out. If it's not, and anything else, and it's a full-scale hazmat, which will bring everybody from the whole county in, that's going to be our primary unit, the hazmat 38, the research unit.
Do you have any questions on the video?
I was going to say that, if you didn't. Does anybody have any questions for Chief Carroll? Commissioner Holmes?
When I looked at the hazmat truck, which is the first time I ever got inside looking at it, what are all the drugs for?
They carry drugs for people who might be potentially exposed to like organophosphates or hazardous chemicals like that.
I mean, those are the antidotes, then?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Commissioner Carroll.
Happy birthday, Sean.
Oh, thank you.
But the question is, the firefighter, the fire personnel that have these special skills, are they on duty, or someone with those skills on duty all the time in the city of Largo?
Correct. We have a minimum of two trained hazmat personnel on duty, and two tech rescue personnel on duty at all times, 24/7.
And in the fire service, with these sorts of shared resources, some of which are funded by the county, if, let's say, a car goes into a building down in St. Petersburg, and they have a building collapse, how does that call for assistance come in for mutual aid?
Well, if it was in St. Petersburg, St. Pete Fire Rescue would respond to the call and determine what other resources they need on scene. A lot of times, that'll just be handled by St. Pete. You know, they might upgrade it to a tech rescue call, but just handle it with their tech rescue unit. We do the same thing in the city of Largo, where if we have a car into a building, we could upgrade it to a tech rescue incident, but we'll just handle it with Station 42 units and the other units on scene. When we had the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond collapse years ago, it's probably been about 10, 12 years ago, that was a full county upgrade. So, it just depends on the severity of the call, how many resources from the team will respond.
Okay. Thank you.
And like hazmat, where it seems as if our vehicle is a real role player in the whole county, how does the training with other departments and other personnel from other departments, do we train with those folks as well?
We do. We train as a county team. So, when they do their bi-monthly trainings, it'll be, the different departments will come together, and all the personnel will train together.
Got one other question for you.
Sure.
During the Walmart fire, there was, someone brought up an issue about the air tanks, getting them refilled. Did we ever solve that problem, where you could refill them while you're on the call? Didn't we have a, someone wanted to get a truck, a special truck over there with a pump to refill them? Did we ever get that solved?
We have that ability with our squads that we have at Station 38 and 39, so I don't know that particular incident, if there was some other issue getting air tanks filled, but I can check on that for you.
No, this was just curious. I mean, I remember talking to some of the guys over there, and they said, "Yeah, they're really running low on air tanks." And I thought, of course, I mean, all the equipment they had there, and they had so many, they had hundreds of firefighters there.
Sure.
That may have been an issue. Last question. There's three vehicles you just showed. Thank you very much. Very interesting. When is the last time we used each one of those trucks, if you know?
Well, I can speak for tech rescue. We just used the tech rescue truck out on US-19 for a call that was in an elevator shaft. A person was trapped in an elevator shaft. And they roll out on things like that, if it gets upgraded to a tech rescue. The hazmat truck is used frequently also, and I could get you that information, and pull those call stats for you.
Yeah, well, I wouldn't, don't spend a lot of time on it. It was idle curiosity only.
And squad trucks are used almost daily?
Yes, they are used daily.
I think the gentleman, the firefighters that were on the hazmat vehicle, said that they were just up in Palm Harbor earlier this week, or late last week, on a, they, somebody thought they had a...
Also, the one truck, they had a call this morning. They thought a helicopter was going to crash out there by Valpak.
Yeah.
I guess they just landed instead. I guess it's better to land than to crash.
That's definitely...
Write that down. Memo to self.
All right. Well, thank you, chief, for bringing this information to us, and thanks for showing off trucks today.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good video. Show it to the school kids.
Next up is Read Woke program from the library.
Good afternoon, commissioners, mayor, and city manager. My name is Marissa Carlisle, and I am the teen services librarian at Largo Library.
And my name is Victor Tarot, and I'm the community engagement librarian at Largo Library.
We just want to share a little bit about the Read Woke program with you today. Largo Public Library invites readers to explore a new diverse reading initiative for all ages, Read Woke. Provided in partnership with Beanstack, the library's new online platform, used for patron reading programs, and inspired by award-winning school librarian Cicely Lewis, this initiative is designed to inspire readers to read woke. Lewis established the Read Woke initiative in 2017 to support her students in response to challenging current events, and in an effort to build community and empathy through diverse reading. Lewis determined that to be woke, a book must meet the following criteria: challenge a social norm, give voice to the voiceless, provide information about a group that has been disenfranchised, seek to challenge the status quo, and have a protagonist from an underrepresented or oppressed group. The Read Woke initiative is an opportunity for participants to continue to grow in their recognition, understanding, and celebration of diversity. The program provides the opportunity for library patrons to be exposed to points of view, groups, and cultures that are different from their own. Options for children, teens, and adults provide a framework for families and the greater community to build connections with one another by supporting education and dialogue around diverse issues. Read Woke programs have since been adopted by school and public libraries across the country and overseas.
And to build on that, I'd like to share some details about the Read Woke program in our library. So, Largo Public Library Read Woke initiative, available through the Beanstack app, August 2020 through June 2021, includes reading or listening to books, engaging with online resources, and options to engage in other forms like movies, videos, et cetera. Reading and other resources lists are available, and patrons have the ability to determine their own Read Woke titles. Between August 1st and today, 100 people registered for the program, 294 books were read, 199 activities were completed, and 61 book reviews were submitted by patrons. There are 10 theme badges to earn, with one new badge available every month. Each badge highlights a diverse community or experience. Since the beginning of the program in August, 126 badges have been earned. All patrons who complete the program are entered to win a Read Woke tote bag. The teams have been covered so far include Black Voices, Mental Health, and Immigrant Voices in August and September. Voices in August and September. Some upcoming voices include Latinx voices, Native American indigenous peoples, and poverty and homelessness. In addition to the in-app Beanstalk activities, the library has a Read Woke display running through October 2020 that follows the monthly theme and serves as a starting point for patrons to discover books and media from other perspectives outside of their own. Reading with Rogue emphasizes diversity and inclusion and aligns with the city's goals to be the community of choice in Tampa Bay.
Library staff would like to thank you for the opportunity to share information about the Read Woke program, and we look forward to any questions you may have. And a special thank you to Commissioner Smith for inviting us here today.
Thank you. Any questions?
I find this not the most comforting thing I've ever read because one thing about the United States is we are greater than the sum of our parts. And yet this thing here, I didn't read anywhere in here about how to be a good American. I didn't see that. I saw all this individuality, this diversity based upon culture, upon race, but where in here does it say about, well, we're gonna have a program about the greatness of the United States and why you should, you know, be, honor your citizenship and look forward to it, and you know, why, why is it that this, why we came about the way we did? Why is the United States structured the way it is? But instead, this stuff in here, this is all, you know, Black Voices, Mental Health, immigrant voices, Latin voices, Native Amer-, where's just the American voices?
All of those are American.
No, no, no. Those are, those are, this is identity politics. This is the, the pure definition of identity politics. That's what it is.
So I-
Hold on. You, you'll get your turn coming. But like I said, this thing here, I didn't find any comfort in this thing at all.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson?
Let me, I'll, I'll talk for a little bit. I, I think it's, I, I certainly understand the importance of, of celebrating America as a country and celebrating the unity in, in America. And I think nothing celebrates unity more than celebrating the differences and the folks that are different among us. So, so, you know, I, I read through all this and I, and I did a little bit of research on the, on the origins of the program. And the only thing that I'm, I, I hate using slang terms, so that, that, that bothers me just a little bit, the word woke.
The word woke.
But, you know, that's a generational thing, I'm sure. I'm older than the, the word woke, I guess. So that's the only thing that really bothered me about it. And I think that it's important as a community to look to folks that are either underrepresented or, or just, are different from the rest of us and, and celebrate that and, and celebrate our differences and, and, and then connect as Americans. I think that's important, or Largonians, or, or whatever we all are. So, so I think it's important for groups. Commissioner Robinson, do you have a question as well?
Yeah, well, I did have an actual question. So as far as your, your, your reading list and the resources, where can those be located at?
So we do offer some readers advisory materials within the library, and we share through social media as well, readers advisory materials related to a variety of things. But specific to Read Woke, we do have monthly readers advisory posts that share different titles that you may want to check out. Again, the program does not require that you read those particular titles, they're just suggestions. If you're looking for paper materials, you can stop into the library either in the adult area, children's area, or the teen area. They have specific readers advisory lists catered to those age ranges.
Thank you. And so to the comments that were made earlier, I believe that, you know, all of the groups that were being discussed and, and, you know, talked about in, in this program are all obviously Americans. And in this context, I don't believe that we're, that the library by any means or the, this program is trying to be political. I think it might be made political, but, you know, that's on somebody's opinion. I think what the, the, the library is trying to do is trying to educate residents of Largo. And, and there's a lot of different groups and organizations that people might not necessarily have access to on a regular basis. And I think this is a great opportunity for those folks to find out a little bit more about things that are going on outside of their little groups that they live in all the time. So, thank you. I commend you both and, and the library staff for all you've done.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
I thank you both and the library staff for putting together, and, and I'm, I wanted us to talk about this because I, I think we are Americans, and, and I'm proud to be an American, and I'm proud, but I wanna learn more about other people and other communities and things that are outside of my own comfort zone that I don't know about. Because my parents raised me to keep an open mind and keep an open heart and learn about other people that you don't know what they've gone through or what they're, they're going through. But they're Americans and you, it's opening the heart. And, and I hope, I really hope, a lot of our patrons take this to heart and go to the library, check it out, keeping, like I said, my parents taught me, keep an open heart and keep an open mind. It's the biggest thing of America, and we need more of that. So I, I congratulate staff. I hope more than 100 people, I hope 1,000 people come to start using this more and more libraries catch on. And if you guys can share this with other libraries, libraries in Penney County, I, I really would love to see them catch on to this and, 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 and just love each other, be kind to each other, and respect. But I, I also commend, I, I love, I got the catalog in the mail this, this month on page, those at home. Page three, it talks all about what the reading, the all age, all ages reading initiative is. And then on page seven, like y'all, y'all talked about was the, the different books to read about in the next coming months. And I look forward to checking them out. And then, like I say, just keep, keep an open heart and open mind and, and just, we're all Americans, and we need to love each other and get past our differences. So, thank you, and thank you so much, and keep it up. So, go Largo Library.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Finger?
Thank you. I think it's an excellent program as well. Reading the program, the summary that was provided, and it reminded me when I read about the 10 themed badges, it made me think of programs that were available to us as kids. Many of us may have participated in Girl Scouts or such, and you earned a badge for doing, usually for doing something that was a challenge or a, and as described, very similar to as described in here, was to be exposed to points of views, groups, and cultures different from your own. And that's similar to what we were challenged to do as we were growing up. And that's also, you have the, you have your choice, and you did in that same theme, you have a choice of what you wanna do, which is also encouraged through this program, to choose what you want to be challenged by, choose where you wanna expand your knowledge and connect with others. And also, it very well aligns, just as, as described in here, with our goal to be the community of choice and have that diversity and inclusion and knowledge of others and, and also that it's overseas. I mean, what a, what a great way to connect. So, thank you for being here. Thank you for encouraging this type of program, and I look forward to being able to check that out. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carroll?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, thank you for the efforts. I think the library is the perfect place for understanding and communication and to look at things through maybe a different lens. But as demonstrated up here this evening, I think we also have to be careful about certain things that could be termed trigger words. I mean, woke is not a term I would use, so it's kinda-
That's because you're old like me.
Yeah, well, I'm older than you, much older than you. But I think we have to be sensitive to that, especially in times like these when people are looking for reasons to polarize. I mean, there are certain, I mean, one of, one of my colleagues up here jokes that he's a liberal. I don't know if you could pick, pick out which one that is, but we, we joke back and forth about that. And, you know, I, I certainly am, consider myself a conservative person, but you just, just be sensitive, I think, to terminology or trigger words or slang or whatever you wanna call it. There are a lot of them out there these days, but the bottom line is, better understanding, better communication is always a good thing. And certainly if we can offer that through our library programs, with, with the knowledge that how we label something might, might be a turnoff to certain generations or certain, you know, groups. We want inclusion and we don't wanna, you know, give anybody the idea we're trying to force-feed an idea or an ideology, you know, to them. So it's a great, great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. We certainly understand that point. This particular program started before us, so we kind of took on the name, so that way it would be recognized as such, but I certainly understand that point.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a reading initiative, celebrating differences. I mean, start with that and everybody's on board, you know?
Absolutely. We're hoping that by, by reading about our differences, that we will bridge the divide and the divisiveness that you spoke to earlier, Commissioner, so-
Instead of talking about your differences, why don't you talk about your commonality?
As, as well as?
Certainly.
The bottom line is, what do you have in common?
That you have choices of what you can read. So perhaps if you look, if you log on and you look, you may find that there is an opportunity to do so.
And perhaps if you, if you read about cultures different than your own or folks that have come up from different areas, you'll find similarities you didn't know of beforehand.
That's a great point, certainly, yeah. The intersectionality between different backgrounds, cultures, life experiences, identities, all of those different things. I think we do often find common ground where we least expect it there. So we're hoping to sort of build our community through, through learning a little bit more about that.
Absolutely.
And woke is improper grammar for awaken.
I'll let Ms. Lewis know about that one.
Thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Team Member Employment Guidelines, formerly known as Something Else.
I was gonna say Prince, but no, it's been taken.
Use proper grammar.
It's been done. Well, we are so pleased to bring before you today these reworked, reimagined employment guidelines. I know we've had, and I'm looking at John, Commissioner Carroll, he's somebody that has grown up with the personal rules and regulations here at the city of Largo.
We needed them.
And we're gonna miss that name, we're gonna miss that name, personal rules and regulations, you know? It just, the way you name it and the way you think of it is, that's just a huge beginning to intro the work that's been done to the committee, with the committees that have looked at this, this publication that really sets the foundation and framework that we work within at the city of Largo. Now named the City of Largo Team Member Employment Guidelines, this has been a project that has lasted about a year. I think just almost to the day, we had our first executive team meeting to give some parameters, some guidelines for the employee group that was going to come to really transform this document. I, I want to, before we get into the presentation, acknowledge the group, the employee committee specifically, Joan Waco, Human Resources, Matt DiFiore from Administration, they were two people that headed the group up. Don Smolowicz was on there, Joe Manning from, from Fire Department, Katie Bishop, Communications and Engagement, Jan Ward, Environmental Services, Richard Zagata from Fleet, Jennifer Fawcett from Recreation Parks and Arts, Robert Stoltenberg, wastewater treat, he was a wastewater, he is a wastewater treatment technician senior from Environmental Services, and Ed Sahousky, who I know you all know, Ed. But it had representation from all the different levels of the organization, which is getting into the high-performing organization that we want to be and that this document seeks to reflect. So as you see, our project goals were to move us towards a high-performing organization and one that our foundation, as I spoke about, reflects our values and reflects not necessarily a punitive look at what we do every day, but one that inspires, one that you read it and you, you come away with first understanding what you've read. Because some of the language was a little curvy, you know, in and out, and you're like, what did that really say? And so to provide clarity and also to provide an environment that we, as a high-performing organization, seek to evolve to and currently reside in. And we're pretty far away from that personal rules and regs environment. So, modernizing the language was huge, as I mentioned. Just a better opportunity to organize the content of this personal rules and regulations. Sometimes you didn't know where you could find things, and that shouldn't be that way. There should be more clarity in this particular book. I mentioned the employee teams primarily, there was an executive team, as was mentioned in the memo, and the employee team, which I mentioned by name. There were also two other committees that provided material for this book. And they were two teams that looked at modernizing our employee benefits and looking to see what's out there that we may wanna include to make us an employer of choice and to make us stay up with our, our neighbors and be that high-performing organization that honors the commitment of employees. We, of course, wanted to eliminate the unnecessary bureaucracy that would occur. You had to go here and then get it approved here and then get it approved here, and you still weren't done. We wanted to flatten that particular approval chain, and we definitely wanted to increase flexibility and the opportunity to do great things as we come to know those from the ideas of employees. This is just a great example when you look at the old purpose. I'm gonna read this. "It's the purpose of these rules to establish procedures which serve as a guide to administrative actions concerning various personnel resource activities. The rules are intended to indicate the customary and the most reasonable methods whereby the aims of the personnel program will be carried out." Good times, good times there. Okay, I think we've evolved past that. So, as you see, this is the type of look and feel you'll get from the employment guidelines. "The city of Largo is a team member friendly environment where goal-oriented individuals thrive and move from a common vision to successful outcomes. We are a home to an engaged work culture where our values guide our behaviors and decisions." Simply put. So, you'll see, there's that culture shift and that opportunity to create and be inspired. Our major changes, as you can see from our presentation, we have, at five years, we never had a monetary award. And the group that looked at benefits felt that $50 after five years would be something that was indicative of the rest of the structure. At 10 years, there's an, there's $100 recognition. At 15, 150. At 20, 200. So they thought that it would really make sense at five years to not have that be the only level of five-year incremental service, that there was no monetary award. So we, they went ahead and recommended that, and that was met with a lot of support citywide with the groups that heard about that, and of course, the executive team as well. So you'll see that in our new employment guidelines. We also, on this next item, had opportunities to get consistency with our workday project. And I'll mention that a number of times here. The birthday and anniversary date is something we have traditionally had for years and years. And it was always 30 days before or 30 days after the birthday or, or five-year anniversary day. We're changing that to a floating holiday. If you hit your five-year anniversary in that fiscal year, you can use it within that fiscal year. It is much easier to monitor that way, and it's something that is more meaningful for the employee when you're able to do something in conjunction with potentially something you were gonna do with your family and have that be more value-added. We have new flexibility for position changes mid-year, which is so nice. In here, we're recommending not only during the budget process, but if there is good reason for the city manager to allow for a position change. We wanted to do something more flexible, more real-time. If we felt that there was a better allocation of a particular initiative, possibly there's a redevelopment opportunity that comes up rather quickly and we wanna pivot, we want the city manager to be able to make that change within two ranges, plus or minus, in, in a position, whether it's a reclassification or delete add, plus two or minus two, give him that ability to pivot if, if we need that. But of course, that's something we're very, very careful during the budget process to envision that next fiscal year. envision that next fiscal year, and to make sure we're giving the commission excellent information to pass the budget. This is just something that allows us, in the event I mentioned, to pivot, that we're able to do that and be a more flexible organization. Additionally, we have department directors that are able to, to get rid of some bureaucracy. We were having the department directors with Human Resources partnership be able to allocate if, within the minimum to 15% over the minimum, that they were able to have a little bit of flexibility there. We, as Human Resources, will make sure that that's happening in a uniform way, because we all know, you know, if you're giving up to 15% of the minimum, suddenly magically everything's 15% over the minimum. So, we're here together to partner, based on objective items, as education exceeds minimum qualifications, and the number of years' experience that people bring to the job exceed these minimum qualifications, to duly weight that and to look at where they should fall within that organ, within that pay range. We don't want to disadvantage somebody in the city, because someone's coming in from the outside and getting consideration, and people that promote from the inside don't get that same consideration. So we now, through our pay and class initiative, have a formula that we can use to help guide us to make sure those types of things don't happen at the beginning of the range, and that we're giving fair consideration. So, that is part of that flexibility. We have combined all leave benefits into one section, the sick vacation PO, these other leaves of absence, it was always a little bit of a hunt in the personal rules and regulations, people will miss that, you know, not knowing where to find things, it's gonna be different. So everything's very well-marked, and we've gotten a lot of support based on this redesign, and of course, the organization of this new document. And with that, I'm gonna kind of debrief on this page all at once, there is a standardization of a number of programs. The 15-minute incremental utilization of benefit time is something that we need to do by virtue of Workday, and our system already allows for that. It's extra flexibility for the employees, and it gives us one source of reference to, as to how people use their benefit time. We had probably 20 different ways we are allocating this time, and now we just have one. So that is very, very helpful. Vacation cash out included, sick leave conversion, we had different minimum amounts of benefit time that had to be on the books. Now, everything through collective bargaining, you heard in the contracts with PBA, and I anticipated it with CWA. We now have a uniform system. I have a little bit of work to do, and we know there's a little foreshadowing with IAFF, and we've, we've spoken about that, but they're next to be in negotiation, so we're gonna partner on that, and I'm, I'm sure come up with a, an excellent end result together. So we, we've done a lot of the heavy lifting to make sure that there is a uniform framework for vacation cash out and sick leave conversion, in addition to this quarter-hour increments of benefit time utilization. Our new leaves of absence, that's something that we're very excited about, and something that makes us competitive with some of our neighbors. We have other organizations, I'm holding up the work product of our benefits committee, that worked so hard in analyzing what other places are doing, both public and private sector, but we have, Penellus Park does a parental leave, St. Pete does a parental leave, Hillsborough County does a parental leave, and our employees that were on this committee felt that we, as the City of Largo, need to support its birth, adoption, or foster care, which runs consistently with FMLA. We would run this four-week parental leave that is recommended benefit, and one that's been embraced by the employee committees, and definitely the executive leadership team. That's something that you'll see as a major change in this, in our employment guidelines. Additionally, one day of bereavement, because we, there's all sorts of scenarios that we run into, individuals that are in town, out of town, in state, out of state, and it was just easier to know that there's one benefit for everybody, that it's not, you know, because there's this set of circumstances, people can absolutely use their own benefit time to do whatever they need to do, but one regimented benefit, adding that day of bereavement makes us feel that we're properly honoring what the employees' opinions were and brought to the table. So, with that, I'm here to answer any questions and handle any input that you might have.
Any questions? Mr. Carroll?
I'm gonna miss it, I'm gonna miss the old one.
No, it's, it's just like, I'm white-knuckled.
You email him a copy of the old.
Pray me away, I know, it's, I might have a, a tear.
I think the time we spent in staff meetings discussing things like dress code and other things, it'd be nice to have that time back. I'm happy to see the HPO coming through in this sort of thing and breaking down some of the silos, the inconsistencies that used to exist between departments on, on, you know, discipline and things like that, not that I want to focus on discipline, but I did mention to Mr. Schubert that when you have a guideline on discipline, it's sort of like having a guideline on a speed limit, you know? What's cut and dried and what isn't, but what's more important to me is you're focusing on the positive here, and, and leading by example, and trying to have consistency across departments, these are all good things. And in the old way of doing business, you could put a face with the rule that was written in the book, a face or a circumstance, and I'm glad that's gone. Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Great work, you guys did an awesome job. With the, I was really impressed with the, seeing the parental leave for four weeks in there. Question is that, does that include the mother and father?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Kudos and keep it up, I very supportive, thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Commissioner Carroll wants, I've got one of the old books, I can give it to you. Well, I've got several.
All four versions?
Yeah.
I would like to mention, Merity Simo is next to me, really shepherded the process quite a bit, and the executive team consisted of Merity, Maggie, Pollock, Jeff Undestad, and Kate Oyer. So that was a very, very important group, and the energy and effort and organization that Merity gave that, she really deserves that recognition.
Yeah, job well done. Do you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'd kind of expand on Commissioner Carroll's comments about, in regards to the HPO, you know, organization that this city has become. I find it just very exciting, you know, working for a company who is not necessarily an HPO organization, and seeing what we're able to do here in Largo, it's, it's great. And it, it's, it, I believe it will, it just, you know, pay dividends a lot, in, in the, probably now already is, but absolutely in, you know, form of recruiting and things like that, I know that, you know, people that are coming and seeing that they actually have a voice, and what they're trying to do matters, means a lot, so, you know, I, I'm glad to see that that was put into place for this, because, you know, all of these things that we're talking about right now absolutely matter to people who work here every single day, so, thank you guys very much for doing that.
Thank you.
Yeah, in, in reading through it, I, I, like, this is refreshing, which, I was reading Employee Handbook, and I, and I said it was refreshing to read, so it's good, you did a good job.
What's going on?
I don't know. It was, it was good to read. I liked on your first slide also that it had to eliminate unnecessary bureaucracy, because that's a huge, huge goal of mine, and I think of ours as well. So keep up the good work, and it's, I'm sure that, by the, you listed a whole bunch of employees from all across the city that worked on this, and I'm sure that there's a lot of, it was a lot of good input, and, and a lot of people are really happy to see this, see this come out, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Oh, great job.
Thumbs up.
Thank you, Commissioner Finger. Great.
Next up, are there any committee reports that anybody has to share today?
Just forward, Penellus, we have our meeting tomorrow, but I'm also the chair of the local Coordinating Board. I just want to put it out to the commission, if you all know anybody who, we have an opening on our board for a resident who's 60-plus to serve, so if you have any citizens in mind, please send them my way, and I would like to recommend them to serve as, on our local coordinating board for transportation disadvantage, so, thank you very much.
Free time, John?
Yeah.
When, when does that meet, just in case I get John's email?
Let's, no.
And what, do you know when it meets?
Oh, it's a, a three, yeah, three times a month, it kind of, it staggers, I can't, I'll get it to you.
So three times a month, though?
Yeah, three, I'm sorry, three times a year.
Three times a year.
Three times a year, they, they meet Tuesdays.
It's a little more.
Yeah, it's better. Three times a year, at 9:15 in the morning, usually runs about maybe an hour and a half on Tuesdays.
I'll, I'll put that out there to my coffee chat, because the average age is up in.
Yeah, can you send me that information as well, Mike? I might have, you know, I'd like to put it out on maybe some of my social media as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I, just for the PSTA, just want to let everybody know that we, you know, had our two meetings this last, this past month for passing the budget and the millage rate. Millage stayed the same as max, but, so yeah, moving forward for another, looking forward to a great year.
Good, I did have a Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council meeting yesterday, the main topic of discussion was FDEP grant that the TBRPC is administering, and, and I'm happy to say that the City of Largo received two of the grants. We, we were, I think we were the city that received more money than any else, and any others in, in the entire region, which is, is a, a big area, and those grants are environmental educational grants, so I'm gonna tell you just, I'm gonna read you a little bit about what they're gonna do. The first application was $10,000, and it's intended to target and educate individuals around construction and development projects. They talked a little bit about that, that was, it's one of the, the major pushes of, of this organization and the grant, because development and in construction projects have more impact on our stormwater system than anything else throughout the whole region. So, so there, with, with that money, we will be wrapping a couple engineering service department inspector vehicles that go out to job sites regularly, and then with some of our city-funded projects, we'll put some billboards highlighting best practices, and we'll put together some education pieces for construction folks and developers in the city. The second application was a $5,000 award to replace two and install seven new interpretive signs in, in, in Largo parks. So there's, there's one at McGow, and one down at Bonner, Central Park Nature Preserve, Highland Rec Complex, Lake Villa, Northeast Park, and Paul Place. And they're, they're gonna talk about things that affect that park, the Paul Place, will be talking a little bit about picking up waste, and, and out at the, the Bonner and McGow will talk more about, like, how pollution affects migratory birds and, and different things. So it'll be topical depending on, on the location, but that money's gonna pay for that, and so they talked about Largo quite a bit in the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council meeting on Monday, so, congratulations to the staff that, that applied and helped us get those, those.
Mayor on the Suncoast League, Commissioner Robinson reminded me, this, this week, this Friday on the 16th, from noon to 1 o'clock, there'll be a virtual meeting of the Suncoast League of Cities, hosted by the City of Seminole, but the speaker there will be Florida League of Cities President Tony Ortiz, not to be confused with Tony Orlando, but he is a good speaker, and I think it would be an interesting presentation, and I would just remind my colleagues here that we have a really good relationship with everyone in that chain of command at the Florida League, so if you can tune in, I, I think it would be a good thing. So, online, Friday, October 16th.
Can I expand on that if I may?
You may, you may.
Just found out today, we're, we were, we were planning another legislative roundtable. We had one last month with Rep. Webb. This one will be November 20th, and obviously there'll be more information coming, but Senators Brandis and Hooper will be on, on that, so will be more information to, on that to come, so stay tuned, but that'll be coming up soon.
Could you make sure that the Friday, October, the information gets sent out to us the next couple of days?
It should have been sent out to you.
I think Gloria sent it once, but we'll send it again.
And I, I didn't check my email after, after about noon, did it?
It should be in your mailbox.
Okay, thank you.
Not.
I appreciate, if, if I don't see it, I'll find it. Any other committee reports? Moving on, Commissioner Carroll, anything else?
There was an email earlier this morning from the Police Department about the sentence given to the defendant in the case resulting in Chris Latvalla's work on Jordan's Law. If you, I assume you all got that, so, kind of closes the chapter on that one. Other than that, I just spent three weeks in Wyoming, and I don't know how I got through it, but I didn't have Facebook or anything else while I was up there, and I would encourage everyone to try something similar. It was nice to disconnect, and I'm getting ready for Halloween now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thought you were wearing a mask. Commissioner Smith?
Just a reminder that Shred Fest is this Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00, and I'll be volunteering out there collecting, so, look forward to seeing as many citizens that can come out and want to bring a couple boxes of, of things to the, the location off of, I just drew a blank.
Starkey?
Starkey, yes, Starkey. So it's this Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson?
Yep, we, there's also a sustainability series, this, I don't know if anybody in this room would know when it is, but I believe it's this weekend on, is it Saturday on social, on Facebook?
Yes.
Maybe we can get some more information, but yeah, so yeah, there is a sustainability series, and it's, it's about recycling this week, I believe, see if you're recycling right, or maybe it's about the compost program that we're starting. Anyhow, it should be very educational either way, so, I will probably be at Shred Fest, so that's always a good time, people really, a lot of people bring a lot of paper to that, it's amazing the amount of paper product that gets shredded up in, in that short timeframe.
Old personnel manuals get shredded up.
That's right, we could, we probably got, I'm gonna bring some, I got a couple of mine, I'm gonna bring them, but that's all I have.
October 17th, Largo Recycles Right is a sustainability series at 10:30 on the Facebook page.
I told you I was right, and recycling right as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes?
Wow. This afternoon, Commissioner Carroll and myself, we attended the promotion and swearing in of new hires at the Police Department, and we had, what, one promotion and five new hires, I believe it was, very good welcome aboard, one and all. Henry, when they did the CRA, they had one map there that had green and blue shaded in, and they said, I think the blue was the proposed CRA area. Could you ask them to give us the percentage of residential units within that blue area that are mobile homes? I meant to ask him when he had that thing up, and I, I forgot to do it, because there is a, looking at that map, it looked like about 40% of that was mobile homes. It, it appeared to be, because I mean, it took in Teakwood Village and several other ones, even up north of Rosary Road there, so I'd be curious to see how many of them are mobile homes.
Yeah, we can get that for you, and that's the expansion area you're talking about, yes, sure.
And lastly, my apologies to Sean Carroll, because I did not recognize him sitting out in the audience with his new haircut, wearing motorcycle glasses, which just don't give you the visual acuity that my standard glasses will do. So Sean Carroll, sorry about that.
Good birthday, too.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Commissioner Finger?
Just, yes, I would like to say thank you to Fire for withstanding the heat this afternoon to bring out their vehicles, and be able to present to us all of the equipment, how they use it, and just how important it is to our community, and the collaboration that happens within our, our community and within our cities. It's a really great to see, and just amazing, amazing equipment, and amazing stories of how they use that equipment, and what, what can happen, and, and just, as we were talking, and even in the presentation, to hear how quickly a situation can turn to where they, they may be needed to use the equipment that they were able to demonstrate and show us outside is, is just critical. So we're very blessed to have that here in our community, and just thank you for everything they do, and for being here to provide that explanation. they do and for being here to provide that explanation. So, thank you to them.
Thank you. I was just going to mention the Shred Fest, it was already mentioned, this Saturday, and then the only other thing I was going to ask is if, I know that the videos that were presented to us by the fire department will be part of the whole work session online, but if maybe we could pull those videos out and post them sometime, each individual video, like on Facebook and stuff and social media, to kind of get that information out there.
Certainly.
Be a good idea. That's all I had. Mr. Schubert?
I don't have anything.
All right. Action items.
Yes. Okay. I had a request by Commissioner Smith that the city commission be kept in the loop as to staff's conversation with Commissioner Seal on the Clearwater Largo Road Finding of Necessity. A request by Mayor Brown that the commission be provided with a copy of the, is it the Finding of Necessity report?
Yeah, just for the, when it comes back to, I'm sure it will be part of the.
And have it attached to the agenda packet?
Yeah, at least a link.
A request by Commissioner Holmes that staff provide the percentage of mobile homes in the blue area of the Clearwater Largo Road expansion area, and then a request by Mayor Brown that staff post the videos shown by the fire department on the social media accounts.
Yeah, and before I adjourn, I'd just like to say that there's two Largo Packer masks up here today.
Looking mighty good. Can I ask a quick question of the city manager?
Yes.
Henry, we've received multiple emails from a Mr. Smiley.
Mm-hmm.
I believe he's had some issues.
Yes.
The fire department. I don't expect you to give any type of in-depth description as to what's going on with that right now, but can you just assure us that it's being followed up on, or at least keep us in the loop as we're working through that, or if we're doing anything, something?
Yeah, this communication with that individual has gone back and forth over several months, and it obviously had to do with a call to the apartment where there was a fire in his apartment. He does not agree with the information included in the fire report. We have communicated with him on several occasions that it's our opinion that the information in that report is correct, and we are not going to change it, and he doesn't agree with that answer.
So, we have followed up with him, I'm sure we've had multiple conversations with him.
The most recent conversation with him was this past Friday. The fire chief called him and discussed it with him.
He's just not happy with what's in the report.
Correct. We're not going to change the report, and he's not happy with that answer.
Perfect. That's all I needed to know. Thank you, sir.
I will, I'd like to add to that just a little bit. You probably all know that I pride myself on contacting people that contact me, even if, even if I can't really help them. Mr. Smiley was emailing a made-up, he wasn't, he had sent me one email back in March, and that email, I think you may have been copied on it, it kind of explained his take on the situation, but it didn't seek any response from me or anything like that. And so, I hadn't seen anything until everybody else here did too, just recently. And in that email was copied to woodlargo@yahoo.com, I'm not sure who that is, but I got some emails over the last, over the summer that I didn't get. So, I'm going to, I am going to reach out to him a little bit and just explain that, that, you know, one of the things that I try to do is if somebody contacts my office and, and, I almost said surely, and Gloria knows that if somebody calls and they have a gripe, or even if she takes care of something for me, I want to know about it, so if I feel like I need to, I'll reach out to them. So, it wasn't that I was trying to just ignore this guy. I didn't, I didn't receive hardly anything from him.
That wasn't my question, and I hope that wasn't how that came across. I just was one to make sure, because I hadn't seen any type of return message back to him. And I know we had reserved, we had, the commission has received several emails in over the past couple of weeks, and I just hadn't seen anything going back out to him.
Yeah, he dropped something off today.
Yeah, and yes, and we just received some emails about the, a copy of the letter he dropped off today. So, as long as we're communicating back and forth, I'm happy with that.
Yeah.
And Mayor, I know you do a fantastic job of reaching out and speaking with residents, and thank you for that.
You have to be careful, once, speaking from my previous life, once somebody mentions litigation or it goes to legal, you have to kind of, okay, I wish you hadn't said that, because now we can't work on your problem.
Sure, no, I, yeah, I completely agree with that, and I just, I just want to see where we were with them. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I had, I have one question, is, it's pretty obvious, but I just wanted to, there's a lot of moving parts going on in that CRA. There's a lot, the road being redone, a couple of major mobile home parks have been, you know, raised, and there's new market, market rate housing going in. What is the lag time on numbers like Commissioner Holmes was talking about, about property values and stuff like that? Is it one year? Is it the new appraisal, new assessments?
Yeah, because the property appraiser values properties as of January 1.
Yeah.
And then those values are used for the fiscal year that starts the following October 1. So, yeah, there's approximately a one-year lag. Now, if, oh, pardon me, but, and that's all based on when the property gets its certificate of occupancy, so if they got it, their certificate of occupancy on January 2nd, it would be pretty much a two-year lag. So, it's somewhere between one and two years, basically, the lag.
I just know there's so much going on up there, so much investment, and I expect those numbers will be coming up. Thank you.
One last thing. Also, is it possible, Henry, we could, Ford Pinellas and the county did a virtual housing summit, I think there's six parts.
Yes.
Could we get that out on maybe social media, and when those come out, maybe forward to the commission?
Sure.
Put us in the loop of what that is all about, about affordable housing and everything.
Yeah, they just did the last one on Friday.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.